Good evening. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Happy St. Patrick's Day to any of you that I don't see a lot of green out here. I don't know. So again, welcome. And if we'll go ahead and start with the invocation, we have Pastor Larry Winchester. So thank you for being here this evening. So if anyone that's willing and able to stand, if you can stand at this time, and we'll have the prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. I come giving you blessings and greetings in the name of our Lord. Let us pray. Our Father God, we come to you tonight recognizing, Lord, you are the power of powers and you're the Lord of lords. We come tonight asking you, Fathers, you be look over these proceedings. We pray that our hearts will be open, our minds be open to do the best job we're called to do. And first of all, Lord, we want to thank you for these men and women who have given of their time with the service heart to serve this great community. We pray, Father, that the businesses connected tonight, Father, be along with your glory and your will, that we might, we might experience the great glory of your presence. And our Father, as we go forward, Father, we pray that we would judge and do what we need to do according to your will and your plan. So tonight, Father, just be with us. May everything go smoothly. May your Holy Spirit lead us. May everything that is done be done in order. We pray that all that needs to be accomplished will be for the benefit of us and those who have called us. And again, we ask for special blessing for those who are serving us tonight on this, on this board, that they'll do their very best. And we thank them, Father, for giving them for being our authority. You told us in your word, we are to pray for our leaders, and we are to pray for those who have authority over us. So, Father, we are doing obedient to your word, so we know blessings will come upon us. So all this accomplished tonight will give you honor, will give you glory. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor, and thank you, ma'am. Okay, Gloria, the first item is roll call. If you can accept for the record, everyone's here, I believe Councilmember Huddleston is joining us. Is that correct?
Yes, online.
Hello there, Bob.
Thank you.
Did you say accepted? I didn't hear that.
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, so next item are the minutes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move to approve the minutes for the City Council regular meeting of March 3, 2025, and except for the record, the minutes of the Arts and Culture Commission for February 4, 25, the minutes for the Planning and Zoning Commission, February 6, 25, the minutes for the Planning and Zoning Commission Special Meeting of February 6, 25, and except for the record, the minutes of the Police Personnel Retirement Board Meeting for March 4, 2025, as presented.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next to the claims.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move that we approve the list of claims from February 26 through March 11, 2025.
Second. Okay, there's been a motion and a second to accept the claims. Any further discussion? Okay, so if we can have anyone, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries on the claims. The meeting agenda approval. Any changes to the meeting agenda?
Madam Mayor, staff is requesting that you remove item J1 and J2 from the agenda this evening. It is the appointment of ultimately our new city clerk that will be starting at the end of the month. We have some additional information that we'll need to bring back with these two items in the future.
Okay. Anything else? Anyone on the council, any changes? Okay.
We do have an executive session this evening, so if you'd like to do the reports in advance, just.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and move the reports. What is that, number N to right after L? Is that correct? Okay, so is there a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So moved. Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, there's no special presentations this evening. So the next item is the consent agenda. It looks like we only have one on there, but all items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which the event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence. So would anyone like to pull that consent agenda item, number G1? Okay, anyone from staff, the public, any questions on G1? Okay, so with that, if I can get a motion?
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I would motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Okay, there's been a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. If we can get, oh, any discussion from anyone? Okay, so if we can get a roll call vote, please, Gloria?
Councilmember Romo.
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan.
Yes.
Councilmember Beddelen.
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons.
Yes. Okay, public comments. This is the time if anyone would like to speak to the council, you can come up. We unfortunately won't be able to comment since it's not an agenda item, but you're definitely welcome to come up. And if you can limit your remarks to three minutes. So anyone, and I know I have a speaker card, but if there's anyone else that would like to come up first? Okay. And if you can state your name and your address, please.
My name is Adam Martin. I live at 1378 East Madison Drive here in town, 85122. Good evening, Mayor, council members, city staff, and residents. Again, my name is Adam Martin, and I represent Banner Air, a critical air medical provider with two bases here in Casa Grande, ensuring rapid response when seconds matter. I'm here for two reasons. First, to bring awareness to our membership, to our businesses and residents alike. And I'm also here to ask the council to consider adding Banner Air membership as a benefit, excuse me, for the city employees in the 2025-2026 budget. This membership would eliminate all out-of-pocket costs for employees and their households when flown by Banner Air. No copays, no deductibles, no surprise bills. We already provide this service to other municipalities like the city of Globe, recognizing the value it brings in protecting employees from financial hardship during medical emergencies. This is not just a life-saving benefit, it's also a powerful tool for employee recruitment and retention, showing the city's commitment to its workforce. I've spoken with Mayor Fitzgibbons about this opportunity, and I'd love to have the chance to meet with the city manager and HR director to discuss how this could fit into Casa Grande's benefits package. Thank you for your time and consideration. I look forward to not only working with you, but all local businesses and consumers alike to protect your employees and their families.
Thank you, Adam. Any other? Okay, so I do have a speaker card for Gloria Leha. Gloria?
Yes, Madam Mayor. First of all, she did tell me I had three minutes. I had a 15-minute speech, but she said, but Madam, Mayor told me I had.
But you control the buttons.
But I have the button, you're right. She said I had three minutes, so I kept that in mind. Madam Mayor, members of City Council, City Manager Rains, Deputy City Manager Weaver, City Attorney Wallace, and all of the leadership team members who are here and not here, to all employees, but most especially to my staff, to Yvonne, who's here, Myra, Daniela, Regis, and Irma. I'm gonna try to hold it together. Thank you all for the opportunity that I have had to work for you for the past eight years. Over the years, the city clerk's department has been praised or recognized for special projects, the most recent, the utility box project. But you need to know that this project, along with other projects, were successful because we always had the support from all of the other departments. The community needs to know that we have many, many great employees, and I am thankful for the opportunity that I had to work alongside them. So today is my last council meeting, but I am grateful for the, all of the opportunities that I was given. So I just want to say thank you for the opportunities.
You have more than three minutes.
Okay, let me turn it over.
I was just kidding.
Okay, let me turn it over. I have another 10 minutes.
Thank you, Gloria.
No, yeah.
I should be praising all of you. I've had a great career in working for the city of Casa Grande, and I'm sure as other employees depart, they will tell you the same thing, that it is a great honor and opportunity to work for the city of Casa Grande. Thank you.
Well, Gloria, no, and we all are just so appreciative of everything you do. And we take it for granted sometimes because we know you have the answer to a lot of, you know, when it comes to the agenda items and elections, all of us as, as elected members here, you know, you've made that process so much easier. But we really wish you all the best. And I know today when we were talking, you said, you're just ready. You're ready to spend time with your family and vacation and watch movies, because you never watch movies.
And watch movies and spend a week in Pine Town. Yes.
Oh, okay. Anyway, oh, I can't say too much. Okay, so I guess he's eyeing me that I can't say much, but.
That's why Gloria did it in public time.
Madam Mayor, and Ms. Wallace is right, we're in, we're in public comment section. However, I would like to just say she's, everybody knows on staff that Gloria was with the organization for longer than eight years. And she, I will keep it limited. She definitely staged this perfectly. And Gloria, thank you for all that you've done for us. You've been a fantastic exec, a member of our executive leadership team. You've been, you've been a great colleague, a peer, a friend, and we wish you well in your next chapter of life. And the great news is that I've talked to Jerry, and he has indicated that you will not be changing your cell phone number. But it is going to be, there's going to be big shoes to fill.
And I am sure that you have selected a great new city clerk to come on board, and she's got a great staff, so everything will continue to go on, and wish you all the best.
Thank you. Thank you. We wish you the best. I had to get a last little thing in there. Okay, okay, so any, any other public comments? Okay, so we'll go ahead to, let's see, J3, it looks like. Is that where we are?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, J3. So this is the reappointment of Mark Bonzal to the Police Personnel Retirement Board with the term extended through April 4, 2029. I must say, Mark is just such a joy to be on with this, this committee. He has served on this, how long, Gloria, a long time?
He initially started as the police department representative, elective representative to serve on the board. And the former mayor at that time said, mm, you're moving on to another department, but we still wanted to serve. So he talked him into serving as a civilian.
Right. So he, he's just been great to serve on that. So if we can get a motion, I don't think he's here. I don't see Mark here today. But if we can get a motion to approve the reappointment of Mark.
Mayor Fitzgibbons moved to approve the reappointment of Mark Bonzal to the Police Personnel Retirement Board to extend through April 4, 2029. Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and we are also appointing, reappointing him to the Fire Personnel Retirement Board. And like I said earlier, he brings so much experience and knowledge to, to these boards and is, attends every single one. So he's been really a great addition, and it's, I appreciate, I know Mark isn't here today, but I appreciate his time and dedication. So if we can get a motion to approve this appointment as well.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move that we approve of, approval of reappointment of Mark Bonzal to the Fire Personnel Retirement Board with the term to extend through April 4, 2029.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now we're at item K1. Is that you, Mary?
It is.
All right, welcome, Mary.
Thank you. So staff is recommending the mayor and council approve resolution authorizing the grant applications on behalf of the community organizations and city departments. If a grant is awarded by the Gila River Indian Community, the staff recommends mayor and council give authorization to accept grant funds, authorization to execute a contract, and authorization to accept and disburse funds, and authorization for budget transfers. Under the Proposition 202, Arizona tribes agreed to share a portion of their revenues with the state of Arizona. Of the revenue shared, 12% is made available to cities, towns, or other counties for the purpose of benefiting the general public through either direct distribution to the local government or in the form of a deposit to the state of Arizona Commerce and Economic Development Commission Local Community Fund. I wanted to highlight the contributions from Gila River Indian Community. Since 2018, the Gila River Indian Community has given Casa Grande $1,662,332. Of that amount, the city of Casa Grande has received $1,226,405, leaving $435,927 to go to community nonprofit organizations. So we're just asking for permission, and we'll submit the applications by the end of the month.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Those are great neighbors to have.
They are. So all those gambling dollars are going to something good. And there's great, there's such a variety of organizations that you have, whether it's homeless, you have senior, I think, things on there.
Public safety.
Public safety.
Public safety, yeah.
So, thank you, Mary. No, any other questions?
No.
Okay. So this is a resolution. So if we can get a resolution number, please, Gloria.
Resolution number 5759. A resolution of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing the submission of Proposition 202 grant applications to the Gila River Indian Community on behalf of various agencies for the purpose of benefiting the general public, authorizing the city manager to accept and execute grant agreements with the Gila River Indian Community for any grants awarded to the agencies, authorizing the city finance director to accept and disburse funds as necessary, and authorizing the transfer of budget authority.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move that we approve Resolution number 5759 as presented.
Second. Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, if we can get a roll call vote, please, Gloria.
Councilmember Romo.
Yes.
Excuse me. Councilmember Dugan.
Yes.
Councilmember Beddelen.
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons.
Yes. Okay, so that is it for the items here. We will have a executive session. So before that, we did move up the reports, number N, to right now. So if we'll, we'll start with the reports. And why don't we start over here? Becca, we can start with you.
No, no reports.
No reports? How about you, Brett?
No, no reports this week.
No reports? All right. Sean?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, St. Patty's Day today, everybody be careful. Celebrate, celebrate accordingly, and, and be careful out there in traffic. There's a big accident on I-10 and everything. Just be careful, no drinking and driving. Everybody be responsible and enjoy your St. Patty's Day.
All right.
Mayor, I would just like to say, since Gloria did pin that pretty good with the public coming area, Gloria, thank you so much. I know when I first decided to run for council member, your staff did a wonderful job in helping. I know with Becca, Mr. Beddelen.
Me too.
Mr. Dugan.
Absolutely.
Yes.
You helped us out a lot and let us know timeframe and things like that. So we do appreciate all that you've done, your staff has done, and I know they're gonna continue to carry on the torch. They're gonna continue on to carry on the torch for you. But thank you so much for your service to the city of Casa Grande. Second then.
Yep, thank you. Ma'am?
So per our attorney, if this was like a school, and like the head administrative person is always the one that holds everything together, because I'm, so, you know, thanks. I'm getting a look. But yeah, fantastic. We're gonna miss you. But on a lighter note, they were here earlier, the Taco Fest is March 29, 3:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. at Dave White Park, featuring Ballet Folklorico, McBride and the Ride, Taco Trucks, Dessert Trucks, other bands, cover bands. It can be a great, great time and beautiful weather that day because it's put on by the Chamber of Commerce and the tourism, so we're assured. And the Rotary Auction is April 5 at Pinal County Fairgrounds, and that has a concert by 10th and Main, local artist, good country cover band, so that will be fun. If you need tickets, you can contact me or Councilmember Romo. And the Shredding for the Youth Commission is April 19 at the Pinal County Federal Credit Union on Pinal, 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. or until the trucks are full. So come out and bring your shredding, it's after-tax day, and we'll also have e-cycling too for that. Interesting, I got a lot of calls from residents for stuff this week, but we were talking, and then they said, hey, are you guys watching this stuff at the legislature going through these bills? And I say, you know, city staff does a great job of briefing us every week on the bills. And myself and I'm sure other ones talk to our legislators and say, hey, this is our concerns as municipality. And I know that Mayor Fitzgibbons is very, very involved and goes to the Capitol and talks to them a lot, just so people know that we are paying attention to that and we're on top of it. And it's interesting to see how the state legislature is grousing at the federal government now for taking away some of their powers and taking away some of their money because they do that to us all the time. But yet, now, it's on them. So I hope they see that and remember that as we make our calls and text to them, and make our pleas to preserve our local control and our rights, especially in our general planning and our water, everything that we've been working on for so many years, and our budgets that were required to pass, and they are not. And, but we're very responsible, so we appreciate that, and thanks to staff. But yes, so people know we are, we do pay attention to that. And if you, if citizens have any concerns about any of these things, you can come through us as well because we talk to the legislators a lot. So let us know. But we are keeping track of it, and just so you know, we're looking out for the city, especially the mayor too. I know she does it a lot. So thanks.
Well, and yeah, just to remind people, they represent all of us, just like we do. We represent them. So they're accessible and open to talk to people. Same with the Board of Supervisors, and our Congressman Siskomani is in town tomorrow. So, you know, definitely reach out to them. You know, they, they need to hear people, just as we do. So, so thank you for that, for the reminder. The first thing I just wanted to say is, is the state of the city, you know, that was, gosh, it'll be two weeks on, on Wednesday. But I just wanted to, again, this is our first meeting since then, is just thank, you know, our, you know, city manager and all of our staff and, and our PIO team. I, I think Becca's up there, Rebecca's up there. But, you know, Heather, Rebecca, and Mindy, I just wanted to thank you guys for all of your hard work and dedication. I know how much time that took, and literally, and all, and all the department heads, you know, giving the information, providing all the, all that information to all of us. You know, we, you know, I'm sure many of you have gotten comments that people said that it was so informative, and they were proud to live in this city, to see all the great things that are going on. So just really, that's just, you know, efforts by everyone coming together. So thank you very much. And I know the PIOT are starting those individual videos. I saw yours today on the, on the city platforms. And so they're gonna take those snippets and, and all of the council members, you guys did a great job. And for you that were, it was your first time, you guys are like pros. Literally, I know. I mean, Brett, man, he was rocking that, rocking that construction hat and everything. But no, seriously, you guys, really, it was just really good. And so the videos are gonna be on the, the city platform, so there'll, there'll be individual videos. So encourage your friends and, and community members to go on and learn more about what's happening because I think people really appreciate it. And that's, you know, it's definitely all of this great, you know, team that, that provided that information. So thank you. So let's see, couple events coming up. Pinal 40, you didn't mention that. There's a scholar, their scholarship application is open, and it's due by March 28. I had the previous mayor make sure that I brought this up. So for all the seniors, please go on. And by March 28, is there a website, pinal40.com?
Pinal40.org.
Dot org. So please go on. The Caesar Chavez Memorial Committee, they just finished their application process. Or I say, we, Gloria, thank you for all of your coordination with that, that, that group. You know, we will be holding our 19th annual celebration. We're actually going back to dinners with this group, so we're super excited. The committee, since COVID, we haven't had a dinner, but this is the, you know, we're happy to have this back. Most of you, you should have a mail or an invitation in your mailbox, I think. Weren't they going in their mailboxes for the council members? So if you would like to attend the dinner, it is on Friday, April 4, at 5:30 p.m. at the Property Conference Center. And we will be awarding 64 high school seniors with scholarships. And, and I think I mentioned this before, that this is the first year we actually opened up the application to the trade applicants. So people that are going to some type of trade school, we are also, Gloria, do you remember how many? Was there eight?
Yeah, between eight and 10.
Yeah, that, that are going to be going, not to a university or community college, but they're actually going to some type of trade school, whether it's cosmetology, electrical or whatever. So, so we're, we're excited to do that. So again, April 4 is that. Let's see, the mayor, the mayor's reading club, if anyone wants to participate, it's the second Wednesday of the month. You can sign up through the, the library. That is interesting, if you guys haven't done that, really. If anyone wants to just get entertained with some of these kids when you go and read to them, the questions that they ask. I even had the second graders asking me about apartment complexes and the tiny homes by Safeway.
Wow.
Literally, second, second graders. And you're like, wow, this is coming rate, you know, who's, I don't know, worth their information. But, but it was just really, really cute. So if anyone would like to do that, it's once a month, and it's just really, it's really fun to do. So let's see, Dancing for Our Stars is coming up at the Boys and Girls Club is next week, and then Pinal County Fair. Do you want to tell anyone about the fair, what's going on?
Besides the weather, we had bad, we had one bad day of weather that really hurt us.
Right.
But the rest of the fair went off successful. All the kids got their, their projects sold. They did a great job. I mean, lots, lots of, lots of smiles out there, lots of happy kids with their animals out there at the fair this last week. So.
Good.
Successful fair. Besides the one day of wind, I mean, oh my, I was miserable. But, but besides that, the dust settled down, everything went great, and everybody got to enjoy the fair and all that kind of stuff.
Good. And, and it's such an important, you know.
It is. It is. It's for the kids, for the community, for everybody. It's a very great event.
Great. Thank you, Sean, for sharing that. And then you, some of you may have been getting emails about the city's summer internship program. I think a lot of kids are on, college kids are on, on break right now. So I had, had a few of those. And so I did learn today that it looks like the application is opening on March, Rob is, March 25, I believe, through April 8 for the city's internship program. And they will start, those positions start May 27, and they're for eight weeks. So just in case anyone asks you, just, you know, they'll, they'll be going, they can go on to the website. So that's, that's it for now, and we'll go ahead and go into, oh, yes, sorry.
I want to ask Bob.
Oh, Bob. Sorry, Bob.